Give it to us some mics there, slide over.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
Still got it.
Thank you, everyone. We're gonna call to order the regular school board meeting of the South Euclid-Linhurst Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is now six oh three P M. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg.
Here.
Mrs. Jones. Mrs. King.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mrs. Shelby.
Here. Okay, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, the flag is in the back.
Where's the flag?
Very spirited.
Very spirited.
I like this. So the flag of the United States of America, and this is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we will start with the number two, communications. Do we have these on our boards? Yes.
I do not have my report today.
We have a lot of good news here, and I'm not sure if I can read my own writing, so. Um, hold on. Yeah, Falkenberg. Okay, so, one of the things that we enjoy every year is the senior art show, and this year was no exception. It was actually, it just takes my breath away sometimes to see the work that these seniors do. We had photography, painting, ceramics, sculpture, and even performance art. In fact, Evan de la Vega, who performed his original string composition, won first place and was recognized at the P D S, P T S A Reflections Contest. He will be heading to Case Western this fall on a full scholarship.
Oh, wow. That's awesome.
Yeah, what a joy. Secondly, excuse me, the Brush National Honor Society has paired with Greenview Elementary, Elementary Honor Society and the Student Council at Greenview to collect some much-needed supplies for the local domestic violence center called the Journey Center for Safety and Healing. Something that the National Honor Society, I know, at Brush has done every year, but such a joy to see that they've connected with the Greenview students as well to encourage them to give back to those who are in tough situations. The National Honor Society also hosted Bridget Abbott's second-grade class from Adrian, where they visited the band and art rooms, and also, I'm not sure how this happened, but worked out with the Brush football team. That was quite a joy as well. And then finally, Junior Mel Walther and sophomore Raquel Simmons. If I messed up those names, I apologize, because names are important. But they both have been accepted to the Mandel Youth Academy at Tri-C, which is a paid summer program. They will participate in Socratic seminars, learn from guest speakers, and use the city of Cleveland as their textbook on a number of different field trips. So we give them our appreciation and respect as well.
Uh, I'm gonna switch it up a little bit. I'm gonna turn my reports over to a couple of our principals. Uh, the first one being Ms. Taylor and Sunview.
Good evening, S C L community, give it up for yourselves. Thank you for being here. I am Erica Taylor, principal of Sunview Elementary, and I am so excited to present to you all a very special group of first graders. Our first graders have been working on a special presentation for you, but it ties in with our new curriculum, which is our H M H inter-reading curriculum that we just adopted this school year. So we're very pleased so far with the progress of this program as it blends our structured literacy with the science of reading. And actually, the reason why we adopted this curriculum is because of the high-quality materials, the high-quality reading selections. So I am excited to share with you an opportunity to hear from our first graders who will present to you a little, I'm not gonna spill the beans. I'm gonna actually call up at this time Ms. Kristy Zelenka and Ms. Ashley Marco, who are the co-teachers of two beautiful classrooms. And if you can give them a round of applause at this time, they'll share a little bit more details with you. Even online, they are having issues with hearing. And I just wanna make sure before you start your presentation, everyone can hear.
All right, I'm Kristy Zelenka, this is Ashley Marco, and we have the pleasure of co-teaching together for the last two years. So it's been really fun in first grade together, but there are more advantages than just having fun, because we do have a blast together and with the kids. But co-teaching really has allowed us to collaborate together. That's what everyone wants to hear. Hear me twice. Should we try again? Okay. But it helps us to individualize instruction, and we do a lot of flexible groupings, intermixing, to meet the needs of the students in the best ways. So our inter-reading curriculum, now that we've gone through almost a full year of it, we've been very pleased with all the different components, the structured literacy, the phonics piece, speaking and listening, and the materials, as Mrs. Taylor was saying. So tonight, we're gonna, our students will be sharing a story that we worked on recently in class, and as part of this unit, they've been learning about the key parts of a drama, characters, setting, and dialogue. So our students have also been practicing making predictions about what will happen next in a story and how to adjust those predictions to get that with new information. The story that they will share with you tonight comes from our consumable textbooks, and this, these books really get our students involved. They are able to highlight parts in the books, find text evidence, take notes, and they even love these books because they get to bring these books home with them to add to their own libraries at home. So this reader theater is a fun way to prac, for students to practice expressive reading, work with dialogue, and explore historical themes. We are proud of the progress that our students have been making, and we are excited to share a glimpse of their learning with you this evening. And now, this is Jax.
Hello, my name is Jax, and I am a first grader at Sunview. Today, you will get to enjoy a reader's theater. This is like a play, but the cast reads their lines. The name of the reader's theater is Monument City. We read this story in our class this year. It is part of our new reading program. Let me introduce the characters. I'm Jax, and I'm the narrator. Ezra is the dad, Kinsley is the mom, Aubrey will be Deb, Kimber will be grandma. Grayson was going to be Jeff, but he went home sick today. Would a member of the board like to read the part of Jeff? Thank you, we hope you enjoy it. Scene one, good news. One morning, Mom and Dad had some good news. We are going on a family trip to Washington, D.C.
Does it have a water park, Mom?
I don't know, I know it has a big river. The Potomac River.
What is so great about a house that is white?
Well, what can't we do up there for fun?
Washington, D.C. has lots of great monuments, some are very big. We will see all the sights. We will stay with Grandma, she lives near the city. Her, perfect, we will be there for the Fourth of July.
But I wanna go to a water park on the Fourth of July.
Scene two, the White House. The family went to Washington, T, D.C. and met Grandma at the White House.
What is so great about a house that is white?
Just wait and see. I see Grandma.
Why are so many people here?
Oh, honey, everyone wants to see the White House, it is the president's house.
The president lives here?
Yes, the first family lives here.
The White House has thirty-five bathrooms and one hundred thirty-two rooms.
If I lived here, I could have my own bathroom.
So could I.
Scene three, the Capitol. The family went to see the Capitol. What do you think about the Capitol, kids?
Oh, no, Dad, not another building.
Stop being so grouchy, Jeff. This is where laws are made.
What is that up on the top?
That is the Statue of Freedom.
That is our symbol of our country's freedom.
What is that tall thing way over there?
It is named after our first president.
George Washington.
Very good, tomorrow we will go to the very top.
We will? How many steps does it have?
Eight hundred ninety-seven. Scene four, the Washington Monument. The Washington Monument is the tallest monument in the city.
It has eight hundred ninety-seven steps, but we don't walk up, we take an elevator. It takes one minute to get to the top.
You can know as much, you can know as much about this city as I do. The next monument we will see is over there, it honors our sixteenth president.
Abraham Lincoln. Scene five, the Lincoln Memorial.
If the statue inside could stand up, it would be twenty-eight feet tall.
Mom, do you have a penny? My teacher said the ba, the Lincoln Memorial is on the back of some pennies.
Let me see that.
Kids, walk down to step number eighteen with me.
One, two, three.
Take a good look when we get to step eighteen. Why do you want us to stand here, Dad? Remember this step, I will tell you why when we get to the next monument.
Another one?
Scene six, the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial.
The monument to honor Dr. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior is one of our newest monuments.
He looks like he could walk right out of that rock.
Dr. King gave a great speech that we still remember today.
It was "I Have a Dream" speech.
My teacher read it to us, we made a picture about our dreams.
In school, we honor Dr. King on his birthday. Do you remember which step we were on?
Eighteen.
Yes, that is the step Dr. King was on when he gave his speech.
Many, many people came to listen to him. I was one of those people.
Scene seven, the Fourth of July. Jeff's cousin and family are going to a water park for Fourth of July. Jeff wants to go with them.
I don't know what to do.
It is up to you, Jeff.
You can't miss the Fourth of July in Washington, D.C. It is our country's birthday, we are all invited.
Will, will there be marching bands?
You bet, and when the stars come out, we will listen to music.
And watch the fireworks.
Then I wanna go. Happy Fourth of July.
Aubrey Wells, Kimber Holt, Jack Rosati, and our technician, Declan Holt. Give it up for them. Excellent job. We're so very proud of them. As you can see, the, the information, the students are learning and having a good time understanding and learning all that information. They're having a great experience, and we look forward to working with this program once again next year. So wonderful job to Ms. Zelenka and Ms. Marco. Thank you so much for your instruction and working together. We have one more quick presentation, and I invited nine special students. If you were one of those nine, would you, the divine nine, come behind me, and I'll let you know what that divine number means. Divine nine, please come on up, give them a round of applause. Our divine nine. They're coming up with, oh, with enthusiasms. We, we do lots of things at Sunview, so you see what, you know, we dance to at Sunview and have a good time. All right, I hope everyone's here. Let me make sure, let's see, one, two, okay. So we have one student that's not here, but it's still a divine nine, and the reason is, is that recently, we had our state math testing in the month of April, and these students not only scored the advanced highest level, but they did not miss one problem, they got perfect scores. All of them, all of them. And that's exciting, that's record-breaking for our school to have nine students score a perfect eight hundred eighteen points on our state math test. I wanna introduce and tell you each one of their names, and then I'm gonna invite them to take a quick pic with Dr. Cable, because that's a special thing, we want them to be recognized for that. So we have. Math test. Oh, yes. There you go. So our first one I'd like to introduce is Haley De Four. Give her a round of applause. You can step up, Raquel Rodriguez. We have Peter Culver-Rubias. We have Julius Brown, Junior. You're not Junior, okay, sorry, 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 Dad. Okay, Hunter Cardo. We have Wyatt Stern. We have Raphael Warsham. And you may recognize Tristan Hayes. All right, so I want again to thank them, and not only them, because behind every good student, we know, there's great teachers, and I do have some of my third-grade teachers here. Kim Irwin is here, one of our math teachers. Ms. Leah Saltzer is here, she's another math teacher. I have Ms. Michelle Burkholder here, thank you so much, she's our reading teacher. And did I see Ms. Franny Boers, she's also here, thank you, Ms. Boers. Also, is Ms., is Ms. Ashley Cozak here tonight? Okay, she is also one of the instructors, as one of the gifted instructors that work with some of the students here. But we are so excited, we get our reading scores tomorrow, but we're celebrating math today, so thank you so much, and have a good evening. And if the students that participate in the Reader's Theater as well as the students that were announced for state testing, I have a little refreshment in the back and a little certificate to say thank you.
Let's give it up for Sunview one more time, that was awesome. All right, next, excited about this next indoor too. We talked a lot about the H M H and what the curriculum department has done, honored the leadership of Ms. Bastak, Ms. Bishko, at the elementary level, and now we turn our attention to the same thing, going over high school scheduling and looking at our different options and what we've done. So Ms. Rysland and Ms. Harris are here, and Ms. Scully.
Come on down.
I can't.
And we did not bring first graders. But nevertheless.
Hey, there's the mic.
It's for the video.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Marnies Harris, I am the high school principal. And we look forward to seeing your lovely cherubs in about five, nine years. Right, keep up those good reading scores and bring them right on up to the high school. So, we want So we wanted to take the opportunity to talk about scheduling, which can be a tough subject. We decided to take a different approach this year and take a collaborative approach. How we did it differently, we had, well, let me follow my slides, the vision for scheduling. Aligning with the district's broader goals that we had for the high school and the strategic plan that was created a couple of years ago, and creating a flexible and future-ready model, thinking about students of the future and what our students need currently, and supporting all students' success and providing opportunities at every corner. So for every student, creating an individualized learning path. So in our collaborative process, we had school counselors leading the charge in the work of one of our administrators, Ms. Scully Gruber, central office staff, which is Ms. Leann Risen, who helped lead the work and shaped this framework of our schedule. We also did something differently where our department coordinators had input, where they came in during the process to see how the schedule was shaping out and to make sure that we were able to honor a lot of the students' schedules, such as our honors courses, looking at our Excel Tech courses, but really having that deep conversation. I think one of the key pieces of this collaborative process is that our counselors had historical context, so they were meeting with the students and they were able to provide us with course requests that students have had in the past, like, hey, I wish we could bring this back, or I'm interested in this particular class or this particular pathway. So I feel like, and I wanted to give them a special shout-out, that the Brush counselors had that context that helped this process flow relatively quickly. Student requests were the driving factor for our course offerings. We wanted to make sure that we were hitting not only student needs, which were the basic state requirements, but what kind of classes do we like to take? So again, we tried to keep every student in mind, from looking at students who take honors courses, to students who are interested in auto mechanics, every pathway for every student. Which led to new courses as we were treading along. We were introducing our entrepreneurship course, which led from our Intro To Business course. Our students loved the business class that we had, so leads to entrepreneurship. And as you get to know me, everything is about a certification, because I want to know what you can do leading past high school. So our entrepreneurship program will come with a certification and students are able to earn college credit. Our second one is Playbook For Success, and this is a unique take on a class that Brush used to offer back in 2003, I think. Students will learn coaching and officiating skills, so they're able to earn their officiating license. So they'll learn their, they'll get a flag football, officiating license, basketball, and now that may not be appealing to everyone, however, once they get their license to become an official, they can start to work. So they will be able to earn money, and it will come on another slide. I'm very interested in earn while you learn. I am a firm believer of not having anyone, adults, students alike, doing something for nothing. So if I am learning this skill, I want to be able to put it into action. So if they elect to go to college, they can officiate a baseball tournament on the weekend. That's a good $300, and they learned that skill in high school. So we looked at advanced conditioning, and this is where that historical context comes in with the counselors. The students were interested in developing a personal fitness plan. Young ladies, gentlemen, you know, growth differently, but they will have that independent study option. They create the course. So this is a way that we can have that student voice that we always want to talk about, and they will have a teacher that leads and guides them. We're also bringing back Intro To Broadcasting. We will be podcasting with students, and our students will have an opportunity. This will be another independent study class. I'm trying to sell Dr. Cable on a podcast called Downtime With Dom, where he will interview principals, so absolutely it is. So, but our students will be the ones helping create, and they will do the audio and the technical piece. Surprise, Doug, that's part of your process. But so, but we also wanted to, you know, podcasts is very interesting, and that's the now, but we also don't want our kids to just jump out there with podcasts, and we want them to do it correctly and learn all the pieces and parts behind that. What does engineering, and again, skills that you can take into the workforce. So our future partnerships that we are looking at in our CTE, our current partnerships, we already have a partnership with Tri-C, but we're trying to enhance that partnership where they're coming in. Our students will have an opportunity to participate in a machinist program, which will lead to a welding certificate and a potential internship with Swage Lock. And again, where we talk about earn while you learn, so students will have that internship while they're here at school, so they will have a flexible schedule. We are looking at our CTE expansions, three programs. We wanted to look at what not only students earning, but looking at our community. What does South Euclid need and what does Lindhurst need? So we are applying and taking on pre-nursing with the STNA certification, manufacturing partnerships, and expanding our ever-popular exercise and sports management. How did we get here? Fighting for our kids, using the data, making data-informed decisions. Conversations that I'm having with parents, 37% of our students wanted courses based upon their interest. We know that if students are interested in content, they're more likely to show up to school, they're more likely to participate. 15% of our student-based body wanted to earn money while they're in school. So why not create opportunities that they are also learning, but they are able to earn? Again, looking at the historical data and looking at what South Euclid and Lindhurst communities will need. How can we be positive community members? We will measure our success through engagement, and again, it was really important that we were responding to student interest. That's very, very important for me. So building a comprehensive high school, that is my goal, that's what I interviewed on. I like to say that I operate off of the five Es. That first E is exploration. We have to find out what our kids are interested in. Once we find out what they're interested in, there are three different, there are four different pathways. We have enlistment, if you're going into the military, enrollment, if you are going to enroll in school, entrepreneurship, and employment. If we can get to that place, we will get to that place, we will be able to tap into every student that walks across the stage at Brush High School. This is about creating individualized learning opportunities, and what that means is we need to get to know our students and get to know our community. Back to tailoring education to student interests. Everything evolves in society. It is important that our educational system evolves as well. And balancing academic rigor with skills, and I think that's really important. We talk about AP classes, we talk about CCP classes, but when we're talking about machinist, when we're talking about students earning their STNA certification, those are adult certifications with rigorous curriculum. So it's not that we are taking rigor out, we just have to look at it in a different way, from a different lens. And providing a diverse post-graduation path. It's not enough for me as an educator to just say that we have a high graduation rate. I want to be able to say that here at Brush High School, we prepared our students for their future. And we also want to make sure that we are meeting the community workforce needs for our students. Any questions?
Absolutely.
I know it seems like here there were some teachers that were looking at maybe bringing on a ROTC program here. Is that still something they're looking at?
Yes, so we did apply for JROTC. We are 27th on the list, I can't tell you what that 27 means. But we did apply, we're waiting to hear back. We've been looking at space. We have students who are very interested. We've expanded our military history class, like our students are very interested in that piece. And we're looking at moving that from like making that seven to 12. We've had other school districts who have inquired about, if you get the program, we want to come to Brush to help join, but yes, we did apply. Five Es, exploration. Yes, so exploration comes with that ninth and 10th grade, with that getting to know what you are interested in, building those foundations, and that comes with certification. Next year, our students will be certified in Lean Six Sigma, Green Belt, and Yellow Belt, finding out what, are you a hands-on learner? Tactile, like what do you want to do? I know personally, I knew I wanted to be a nurse, and then I did an internship at the hospital, didn't go too well, so that's how it ended up here. So getting to know what they want to do early. Then that leads to 11th and 12th grade, so that's where entrepreneurship, we're building out that pathway. Employment, some students know they want to go directly to work. So how do we connect with community partners and providing internships while at school, making that flexible schedule? Enrollment, did I do enrollment already? Enrollment, employment, enlistment, that's where the JROTC comes in, and entrepreneurship, yes, everyone wants to own a business, but we want to make sure that they own a business correctly. Teaching them business law. Our Intro To Business class has exploded. We had a lot of kids interested. So once they go through our entrepreneurship class, they actually will get a college credit, three college credits from the University of Iowa. It's an intense program, with my hope that students will be able to do like a bazaar where if they have a business, where they will be able to sell.
Have you all thought about doing, I don't even know if Brush does this? When I was at school, our 10th grade years, they had us go into the auditorium and work at the gymnasium, whatever you want to call it. There were a teacher in regards to every program or every class, so when it came to wanting to choose like your elective or, you know, the courses that you can take, you know, because 9th, 10th, 11th grade is more so, let's get your credit, get your credit. So when you get to 11th and 12th grade, you know, you do want to take more classes or whatever. Do you all offer something like? Do you see what I'm trying to say, right?
Yes, we do offer that, but it's not necessarily the teachers, it's our counselors. Our counselors go to classes and they talk about the courses that we have to offer. But I do think... I don't believe they have, but that's something to, that's definitely something to consider, because I do think our students are our biggest advocates. So that's something to consider. So yeah, I'll take that into account.
And what I am realizing even with hearing you talk, is we offer a lot, but unfortunately, we have kids sending these classes and they still don't know what we offer, and then their parents still have no clue as to what we're offering, because there is no good communication. And when you talk to your child, your child has no clue what's going on. And I know we want to get to a point where our children are actually understanding, at least for me as a parent, of a 10th and 11th grader. I need for them to also take charge of their education, and the only way they will do that on their own though is if they have an understanding. I have a 10th grader who is all in because he got into Excel Tech, he plays football, so he knows he has to stay on the track. But then I have a junior who's like, life is life, and mom, you know, I'm gonna get to school, you know, oh, it's not real, you know, this government stuff's not, and you have those, and you have a lot of those. And then when you start having conversation with them, they're like, Brush offer that? We don't got that, and we really do. So I just want to make sure we're not missing gaps or loopholes in regards to that, and I'm not, I appreciate our counselors, don't get me wrong, we just also know that sometimes getting communication from other people is more successful than a school or a guidance counselor. And when you talk to your counselor, that's sort of still like talking to a parent or a principal, let's be real. However, when you talk to either a teacher who understands you, you know what I'm saying, or a student, a peer student, you know, a peer model or something that's more relatable, you know, just thinking of different avenues for us to assure that we're getting this information out to our students.
Heard. We are, we are working on, and I'm working with Ms. Craft, to do better at advertising. Tell Dr. Cable and Ms. Thompson all the time, Brush is the best kept secret. I didn't know, I live right down the street and didn't know all of the things that this building has to offer. I mean, we are a comprehensive high school, and there are not many schools around that can say that. So I would agree that we would have to do better at our marketing, and that is one of my charges for myself and my staff for next year, and getting that word out and leveraging the new website and all of the things, and building out partnerships, community partnerships. So if you have anybody out there who's interested, community partnerships are invaluable, because we do have great students, but also not only what opportunities we have here, but what opportunities do we have in the community? And I'm interested to hear what the community has, so I can help make sure that they have that skillset to go, when they walk across the stage, there is a future. Life in life, and that'll be okay, and I'll make sure that you're on the right pathway for life. That's life in.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Miller's around here somewhere. Good evening, everybody. I have a lot of faces in this room. First, thank you for sticking around and hearing from our awesome Sunview group and our high school team, but now it's time to honor those who've given back to our students. Who've given back to our community, have done so much, everything that we've done, everything that we've accomplished here. It's not, it's not an I, it's a we. And a lot of, we have a lot of retirements that we're going to celebrate tonight. I'm going to read something short on each one. Obviously, that's not everything that's gone into this. And without you all, we wouldn't be where we are today. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of you in different capacities, whether I was at Memorial, or assistant superintendent, or now superintendent. It's been a pleasure, and you know, a quick speech and a gift bag's not enough to say thank you, but it's the least we can do, and doors are always open. We welcome you back. We even have some that are working with their replacements already, which gives me goosebumps just talking about that. That's pretty neat to see. So with that, first we have Ms. Artino. Ms. Artino started her career teaching at Loudon Elementary in 1992. In 1995, she became a guidance counselor at Memorial Junior High. She moved to Brush and finished her career at three elementary buildings, all of them, Adrian, Rowan, and Sunview. Did the whole tour, and Greenview. She will retire on 7/125 after 33 years in the district, so thank you very much. Next up, we have Rebecca Cord. Becky began her career in 2002, 2003 school year at Rowan as a first-grade teacher, did not know that. Transitioned to kindergarten teacher in 2011 and 12. She will retire on 6/30 after 23 years in the district, and her principal's even here, that's the one yelling in the background for everything that she's done. So thank you very much. Thank you. Next one, I don't know if I should call her coach, Ms. Suzie, whatever, Ms. Dranka, come on up. Started her career in 1996 at Brush High School, health and PE teacher. She also worked at Rowan in the last eight years at Greenview. She'll also retire on 6/30 with 29 years. This is the teacher that, we have a rookie teacher coming in... This is the teacher that we have a rookie teacher coming in, has already invited them into her gym, has been showing them around, giving the, giving the ropes and has an open door policy as it just speaks to her character. Faculty manager, camera, camera, camera liaison and everything in between. How about that? Coach, Ms. Bussy. Yep. So thank you very much. Next up, we have Pam Ferguson. Everybody check out the T-shirt, okay? You can guess what she did. Started her career in 2016 as a bus assistant in transportation and became a driver in 2020. Is that correct? All right, she'll be retiring in June. And I had a pleasure as a principal standing out there, watching her deliver kids to us every single day at Memorial. And nobody messed with her, okay, including me as the principal. So congratulations. And the what? Oh, and OBI, didn't I know that? Next up, we have Ms. Melissa Jones. Hey, I didn't even see, I was looking all over for you. Doctor Jones. Doctor, doctor. Started her career at Memorial as an ELA teacher in 1989. Spent nine years at Memorial for, before transitioning to Brush for the remainder of her career. She will retire on, on June 30th after 35 years in SEL schools. So thank you, Doctor Jones. I forget anything? That's it?
Congratulations. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have Ms. Kathy Jordan. Come on up. Began her career at Brush in 1996 and spent, as an intervention specialist for three years. She then transitioned to Loudon and Ridgeberry, which were there here before me, for eight years, before spending the remaining 18 years at Sunview. She'll retire on 6/30 after 29 years in the district. And Ms. Taylor has been talking to me about this all day for the last two. Wanted to say a word or two, is that correct?
Well, I just want to reiterate that Kathy is a gem. She has been a pillar at Sunview and not only is she a great intervention specialist, but she is a great friend. She will get the shirt off her back. She will get her last piece of sandwich. She will do what it takes to make sure that her students that are struggling get what they need. And I really have appreciated and just loved working with you. You've been the best.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Ruckel. Another one. Began her career in the district in 1992 and spent her entire time, let me say that again, an entire time as a sixth grade teacher at Greenview. There's a special place for you, I promise. All right, she will retire on June 30th after 33 years in SEL schools. Give her a round of applause. Next, we have Ms. Spielman. Spielman began her career as an intervention specialist. Spent two years at Loudon, 20 years at Brush and her last six at Memorial. I had the privilege of being her principal when she was at Memorial. And similar to what Ms. Taylor said, take shirt off your back, would do anything for any of our kids, worked countless hours, drove me crazy at times, I drove her crazy at times. But her ideas are the reason that we have some of the cool things that we have at Memorial, including a greenhouse space and some other things. So I've watched her firsthand, so congratulations. Next, we have Ms. Walden. Ms. Walden began her career at Loudon in 1991 as a PE teacher. Continued on at Ridgeberry and spent the last 17 years at Greenview. Another one, 17 at Greenview, yeah. One story, quick story, I remember during COVID, I was walking around to the buildings and checking on the teachers. That's when we were filming in class and there was Ms. Walden literally walking on a standstill treadmill, teaching a class going on and had all these things going on. Remember that? And I was like, what are you doing? She's like, everything. And I started laughing. So literally, it's what she's done for all these years. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mrs. Amiska. Started in 1995 as a server slash preparer at Rowan. Moved to Memorial as a cook for four years and then transitioned to ISA. Rowan, Sunview, Memorial and now at Brush. Another one that I had the fortune, fortunate time of working with. And I will say again, somebody that always fought for our kids, always stood up on the front. Husband was a security guard for us, retired last year. I knew she wasn't going to last long when I, we found that out. Man, and also what she's done for us, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. I forget anybody? I'm supposed to double check. You already retired, Ms. Tomorrow, I'm sorry. Okay, last one, he's walking off with this, but asked me not to say anything, but that's not okay. Mr. Miller, our HR director. I've had a pleasure, I've had the pleasure of working with Bill every year, but one, but one since I've been here. And as a new superintendent, need somebody to lean on. I learned, I had to learn a lot quick in terms of three unions, in terms of contracts. Walked in, we had to negotiate three contracts. And having that person with experience, somebody I could trust, somebody that was always there, who answers my calls, who plays my, my own personal psychologist when I need, when I go storming into his office or whatever it might be, Bill's always there. Mr. Reliable, he's a rock in the building and be, be missed a lot, so. You're more than welcome to stick around, go party, do whatever you guys do now that you're retiring. So thank you again.
2.5 is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Nope.
We'll move on to item number three, the minutes. The minutes of the special meeting of May 13th, 2025 will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Next is treasures report.
Good evening. Recommend for approval, item 4.1, the financial reports for month end April 2025. Item 4.2, the bank reconciliation for month end April 2025. Item 4.3, investment earnings for month end April 2025. Item 4.4, the five-year forecast for May, the May update 2025. Item 4.5, the permanent appropriations for all funds fiscal year 2025. Item 4.6, we have one donation there for approval. And item 4.7, recommend for approval, item 4.1 through 4.6.
Can I get a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.6?
Some moved.
Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to comment on the donation from Giant Eagle. As we deal with the reality of what we're losing, schools are losing, it's so important to see our community.
Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Next is number five.
Under five, we find 5.1 certified staff. We have appointments. HR's been busy. We have preschool summer testing, paid leave of absence, unpaid leave of absence, renewal of one-year contracts. And also 5.2 MOU with our teachers union. Seeking the approval, 5.1, 5.2.
Can I get a motion to approve items 5.1 and 5.2? Okay, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question. So the, there's one ELA teacher and then art connections, is that ELA and math together for freshmen? The art connections.
We have art connections. And then. Yes, that's for Rowan.
Young lady right here too, she's here today, Ms. Falkenberg.
So, and then Jose, is that?
That's at Brush for ELA.
For ELA.
Correct.
So my question is, are those, were those department chairs or teachers part of the interviewing process?
Bring Ms. Harris down since she's here, so I don't misspeak. That's all right, no, you can grab the mic. The, the question was, were, for the teacher for Brush, Jose, who's teaching ELA, correct? Asked about the process of the interview.
Where, where that process?
So the department chair wasn't available. What, what we did, what, that was unique. We had students, they, each candidate did a 15-minute lesson and students gave feedback based upon their lessons. So we had a variety of different individuals that were part of the hiring committee, but it was important for us to have students to be a part of that. And they gave great feedback to every candidate that interviewed for those positions.
Thank you. And with that, I have our new one. Oh.
Hearing no more questions, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
With that, we have one of our new hires. Come on down. Grab the mic, Ms. Marshall. Start with the retirees and bring on the new, I like.
Thank you. You know me, hi everyone at home. This is Mrs. Rocky and she will be taking over for art connections. And when she came in, the first thing she asked about was collaboration. She said, how do, who am I going to collaborate with? She said, I don't want to work alone, I want to make sure I'm collaborating. She came in with standards and all kind of stuff laid out, said, I'm ready to work today. And so we're just honored to welcome her to our team. We're not losing anybody, we're gaining. As you saw, Mrs. Core, who's retiring, also with her is Mrs. Bale, two kindergarten teachers. So we were able to have Mrs. Hallam, who used to teach kindergarten, she's going back to kindergarten. And we're also bringing one of our preschool teachers up, Mrs. Khan. So we were able to fill those within, which left us with this wonderful opportunity. She came in, I had her come in, when we talk about the interview process, her and another candidate and just seated classroom, kind of see things. And similar to like Mrs. Harris said, she didn't teach a lesson, but she commented on ways that she would like to engage in that lesson. So we're just excited to welcome her officially to the district. Look out for great things, so thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am very, very excited to be a part of FBL and I cannot wait to get to work, hopefully tomorrow. I'm just really grateful for this opportunity and very happy to be part of the family. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving item, on to item number six.
Under six, non-rep personnel seeking the approval for 6.1.
Can I get a motion to approve item 6.1?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item number seven?
Under seven, seeking the approval for 7.1, our classified staff as well as 7.2 confidential agreement.
Can I get a motion to approve items 7.1 and 7.2?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item number eight?
Under eight, seeking the approval under 8.1, our supplemental contracts.
Can we get a motion to approve item 8.1?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just want to thank our unpaid volunteers. We even have one sitting over there, I think. And without them, we couldn't do it, so. The man behind the scenes.
In, in the name of transparency, I will be abstaining since my husband is listed. Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Abstain. Number nine?
Under nine, seeking the approval under 9.1 for a lease agreement as well as nine, oh, just 9.1.
Can we get a motion to approve item 9.1?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Under 10, seeking the approval for 10.1 and 10.2.
Can I get a motion to approve items 10.1 and 10.2?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye.
There's nothing listed under 11, so we'll move on to number 12.
Under 12, seeking the approval for exceptional childrens, have been busy. Under 12.1 through 12.8.
Can I get a motion to approve items 12.1 through 12.8?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Mo. I would say, so I'm taking the class, if nobody sees this, I told them down last week, I'm taking this class. Our, our special educational department came up for us and everything was great. And it's, it's a fair law class, okay. And it was other people from like even different systems and stuff. And so like I brought our stuff up and it was, they were like, oh my God, you all have, you all are doing good, your step program is great. Then the next day then, I was out in the neighborhood and ran into a former employee who also has children in this district. And she literally raved about our special education program. So that made me feel good. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate your hard work, Amanda's hard work. It does not go unnoticed or unseen, so thank you.
And Ms. Battistone?
Okay, Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg? Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item number thirteen point one, information, any new information to share?
Memorial Day is on Monday, do they send you the information for it?
Yes, I'll be there.
Do you need anyone to walk with you or are you taking anyone?
Always take guests.
Alright, I'll be there. They just sent me the email, please, and I'll come along. Um, are you doing students or anything as well?
Yeah, we have some students invited and I'm pretty sure our band's there too, so.
Band's here, Mr. Shelby?
See? Go to the unpaid volunteer, he knows.
Alright, I'll be there with you on Monday and I know Sandra can't come and Ms. Falkenberg can.
I'll be with the band.
Also, you can be a board member?
I can do both.
Um, we have, I guess we will be giving next week, Ms. Harris, our information for graduation.
Yeah, so graduation, since she doesn't have a mic, so we had our meeting Friday and I updated Miss Jones yesterday at the mayor's, uh, presentation in Lynnhurst. So, I have everything ready for you, we're gonna draft it up and excited because this year, this will be the first year, um, since I've been here that we have a stage, um, per our kids' request. Yeah, yep, so our seating will look a little different, um, but that's what, I think I'm excited for that, that aspect of it, so.
I'm gonna read real quick, um, in regards to tickets for graduation.
Keep preaching.
I'm gonna keep reading because I did give the email and people do send receipts. And other districts who are smaller than us and larger than us, larger than us, even the same size, they get tent tickets. We are literally one of the only districts that does, that does not get tent tickets within the surrounding neighborhoods. I did look, I did my research, y'all know I do before I bring this to this table. And it, we've heard it every year, it's been a situation. So, I, I could understand, I really couldn't understand we were downtown because we still had a half-empty auditorium downtown too. So, um, if you all can, you know, not this year, but for next year, we could, you know, it's, I'm reaching, I'm putting that out there.
I appreciate it.
Only because it had been a disaster for years and I finally did listen to it myself. I think that was all I could add.
Want to give a shout out to the class of twenty twenty-five who's graduating next week. Um, the senior award ceremony was great as it always is. And it was wonderful to see that the Alumni Association gave thirty-two thousand dollars for the scholarships out.
That's phenomenal.
Yeah, so that was wonderful. Um, any new or unfinished business? Um, thirteen point three, board policy first reading. Uh, the superintendent presents the following policies for first read and preliminary review. The South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education will be asked to vote to adopt these policies at the board meeting being held on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. They're all listed here, they're mostly revisions, there's one new one. And then thirteen point four, board policy, policy adoption. The following policies were presented for first read and preliminary review at the board meeting held on April twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Again, these are all listed, we have a mixture of revisions, rescinded, and one new.
Let me keep going, do all thirteen.
Perfect. Uh, thirteen point five, amendment of the superintendent contract. So, South Euclid Board of Ed, South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education moves to approve the contract amended for the superintendent. Can we get a motion?
There you go, you can keep going.
And then thirteen point six, amendment to the treasurer's contract. The South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education moves to approve the amendment to the contract for the treasurer. Can we get a motion?
So moved. Second. I'll take the second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye. And for fourteen, closing items, public comment, I believe we have one? Mrs. Richardson? If you will state your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name is Becky Richardson, my address is five zero nine six Neal Drive, Lynnhurst. I'm the president of the South Euclid Lynnhurst, uh, PTA Council. And I wanted to share recognition that, um, SEL PTA received. Um, so I will read this email I got. It says, dear SEL PTA Council, on behalf of One South Euclid, it is our honor to inform you that the South Euclid Lynnhurst PTA Council has been selected as a twenty twenty-five South Euclid hometown hero. This recognition is awarded to community members and organizations who have made a meaningful and lasting impact on the city of South Euclid through their dedication, service, and positive contributions. Hometown heroes embody the values of compassion, leadership, and community spirit, qualities that the SEL PTA Council has demonstrated consistently for decades. For seventy-five years, the SEL PTA Council has been a vital force in advocating for the best possible future for our children and families. It has served as a training ground for civic leadership, mobilized hundreds of dedicated volunteers, and continuously worked to strengthen the fabric of our community throughout education advocacy. Your organization's enduring impact is a testament to the power of collective commitment and volunteerism. Hometown heroes will be honored at Mingle at Mayfield on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five during a special celebration recognizing their outstanding service. Please accept our heartfelt congratulations and deepest gratitude for your continued service. With sincere appreciation. So, I want to share that with the board.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, I want to give a special thank you to Mrs. Susan Hardy, who submitted our application for hometown heroes. Uh, Mrs. Hardy and the rest of Adrienne PTA are doing an event this evening on, uh, talking to parents, elementary parents about puberty and how to talk to their children about puberty as it's setting in earlier and earlier. So, they're continuing to advocate for our families. Mrs. Hardy did a lot of research, she dug into the PTA minutes, going back all the way to the fifties. Um, the SEL PTA Council was organized on November twenty-first, nineteen fifty-one. And at that time, PTA had five hundred and fifty-nine members. So, I thought that that was a fun piece of information, I'll share that with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
May I just say, Becky, um, how much we appreciate your leadership. You have worked very hard in, uh, going to these, the council meetings, passing on information. And, um, we really appreciate all of that.
Okay, um, there's no need for executive session, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Here, Ashley. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.